Good evening, everyone. Thank you for tuning into the Town in Bennington election results. I'm just gonna riff on some ballots items here before Cassie comes over. I was just told about fifteen minutes till results and that was about five minutes ago, so hopefully you definitely won't have to hear me talk for too long. But hopefully you guys got out and voted today. And also thank you to those who tuned into our town meeting night coverage last night. We were here in Bennington, we were in Shastbury and Pownall, and we covered the school, remote school board meetings as well. So we were very busy with multiple meetings, multiple locations, definitely the busiest night of the year for Cat TV. So, but yeah, I'm just gonna go through the ballot and, you know, just we'll talk about things that were on the ballot. Hopefully you voted. So you already know this, this is just repeat information. So a pretty exciting year for the Bennington Select Board in terms of the number of people who came out to want to be on the Select Board. I think at our forum, we had eight people, but a total of ten candidates running for three seats. That's a really exciting race, really exciting to see what the results are gonna be in a few minutes. But you know the candidates out there, so hopefully you got out and voted for those people that you wanted to see on the Select Board. So obviously with the Town Moderator and Treasurer, we had the budget, of course. So interested to see how that shakes up in terms of that. And then we had the big thing this year was all the charter amendments. Obviously, the Charter Committee, we covered those meetings every week they met for several weeks at the Town Office and came up with, I believe, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six articles to be voted on to be amended in the Charter. Obviously, if those pass voter approval, then they will go up to the State House to be officially approved at the State House in the Town Charter. So be interesting to see how those shake out as well. And then hopefully you tuned into our coverage last night so you can understand what each of the Articles eight through twenty, which are the appropriations for nonprofits in the community seeking money. And hopefully you had a chance to watch that coverage. You can see and hear from all of them about the good work and important work that they're doing in our community. So Articles eight through twenty are those. And usually, over the years, they really have no problems passing, but you never know. But yeah, there are definitely some interesting and important things they do, so I encourage you to tune into that last night towards the end of the meeting with the appropriations. So that's the town stuff. You got, if you came, three ballots, and the other two are school stuff. So we have the elementary and MAU. So we had moderators and all those things and people running in the budget. And we had, let's see, anyone, anyone, any uncontested, let's see, oh, so for MAU, there was no one in Pownall running, so hopefully the Board will kind of maybe appoint someone once they reorganize. But you had one person for Town of Bennington, one person for North Bennington, two people for North Bennington, excuse me, Treasurer Clerk and the Budget. And then, yeah, so, ooh, a contest in Pownall for the elementary, two people but one seat. Same thing for Shastbury, two people but one seat. Obviously, those kind of results will probably only be counted here in Bennington, but we'll wait to hear from, obviously, the other towns that involve the elementary district, which is, of course, Bennington and Pownall and Shastbury and North Bennington and all that stuff. So you probably won't feel or, excuse me, hear the full results for that tonight. Again, probably Cassie's just gonna report on Bennington and North Bennington numbers. So moving on, last ballot here, obviously, is just the Technical School District. Full disclosure, I do sit on that Board. But we had the pleasure of, you could have voted up to four people for a three-year term or two people up to a one-year term. So it's nice to see some people on that Board. We had definitely a couple of open seats this year, so that's exciting. And then our budget, which was a little, pretty much almost level funded. Of course, things that come into these budgets are things that come from the state that we, along with other school districts, have no control over, which is, you know, insurance and retirement benefits and reimbursements for like, for the public schools, special education and things like that. So those things come from the state and really the local school boards are kind of, you know, tied with that information and that things for the voters. So, but yeah, those are the rundown of the ballots. Like I said, probably most people are here to hear about who's gonna be on the Select Board come April. Don't remember, don't forget that, excuse me. That once these results are happening, there obviously is a Select Board meeting next Monday. The new Board will not be seated until the first meeting in April. So when you, when you tune into Monday night's meeting, you say, where are the new people? Well, they don't get seated until April. So the current Board has two more meetings in the month of March before the new reorg happens for Bennington. Most school boards will reorg at their next meeting. I know that the school boards are hosting a roundtable meeting later this week to reorg and things like that for all the Boards. So, and we will be covering that. So yeah, that's that. Again, hope you got out, exercised your civic duty today. I heard from Cassie when I came to vote mid-afternoon about twenty-four hundred, so we're really hoping that maybe that would be close to three thousand, which would be really exciting, a big turnout for Town Meeting. So I am thinking of things to say, but we're really close, I think. She's still over there counting, but yeah, I will leave you with that. Thank you for tuning in, so hopefully it should be just a few more minutes. So again, thanks for tuning in and hopefully the next person you see will not be me, but be Cassie with the results. So thanks so much. It's me again, not the person you wanted to see, but just got an update from Cassie and them. Misinterpretation and miscommunication. So they're probably thinking closer to eight-ten, so you've got a little bit more time. You can come back in a couple of minutes and stuff like that, so they're hoping about eight-ten or so. I'll jump on and hopefully give you like a two-minute warning that they're coming. But yeah, just wanted to let everyone know, thank you for tuning in. This is Bennington results. Obviously, nothing from Pownall or Shastbury or things like that. Obviously, some school races that are multi-town dependent, you'll only hear the Bennington, North Bennington results. For the full results, obviously, stay tuned to the Town Websites of your applicable town and things like that. I'd be remiss from the Cat TV side if I didn't, trying not to get too emotional here, but our good friend Jim Byers, who was on our staff for many years, a dear friend of ours, and obviously, he worked day in and day out as a production assistant with us in my department, too. He really loved everything he covered, but he really, really loved Town Meeting Day and the results. You know, he was a big guy in politics and he loved to hear the results and see all that kind of stuff. So we are definitely, and were thinking of him yesterday, setting up at the various towns, and he would go and cover Shastbury and he'd love it. In Shastbury, they have a beautiful potluck dinner before the Town Meeting, which is, I really think, a great sense of community, and he loved going there and just covering that stuff. So among everything else he covered, he cherished Town Meeting Day as we do as Vermonters. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. But yeah, so we miss him, clearly. Everyone does, and we miss him every day. But yeah, so results coming in, hopefully, ten minutes. Appreciate you sticking in there. And we'll be back then, so go, go to the bathroom or grab, grab a drink or some more food or whatever, and just sit tight. We'll be back. Thanks. Okay, I'm back for the last time. This is the polite two-minute warning. I just got the two-minute warning from Cassie. So we've got a good crowd here tonight, a few candidates and people really eager to hear the results in person. So if you didn't know that, the public is welcome to be here to hear the results. Nothing special required about that. So I also want to let you know that there is a dog here, first ever dog to hear the results in person, so that's pretty cool. Just kidding. But there actually is a dog here. So again, thank you for tuning into our coverage of the 2025 Town Meeting Day election results here in Bennington. And hopefully you did get out and vote today. There was a lot of important things in terms of Bennington for Budget, Charter, obviously, the candidates. It'd be very interesting to see how, who are the three that are gonna get the seats. So I'm just kind of riffing until I see Cassie coming. But yeah, hopefully you got out and voted. And for full results, tune into the Town in Bennington website, which will probably pull in and aggregate all those results, especially for like the Tech Board. We have many towns from, you know, Seersburg and Manchester and Dorset and Arlington and Sunderland and Sangate. All those kind of towns aggregate to our results for people on the Board and Budget and those kind of things. So, but obviously, like MAU results for schools, multi-town, it's gonna take, we'll have to wait for those results to come in and be pooled together, along with the elementary school district as well. So, but, and also remember whoever does win the three seats for the terms on the Bennington Select Board, they'll be seated at the first meeting in April. So when you see Monday night's meeting and wonder where the new people are, they will be coming on the Board in April. So again, thank you for tuning in. Appreciate you guys tuning into Cat TV for all this stuff. And for recaps on Town Meeting Days, feel free to go to our YouTube page to check out those as well. And you can re-watch Town Meeting Day if you missed something important from your town or one of the, you wanna learn more about one of the nonprofits that are asking for appropriation in Bennington that do a lot of great and incredible work. So those were all documented and recorded last night, so feel free to check those out. They're really cool. So, all right, still waiting, but I'll leave you be, and Cassie will be here momentarily, momentarily, with the results. Thank you. She's getting up. All right, here we go. She'll be over next.
Okay, cell phones, volumes down, please. So as many of you are aware, I'm only reading results for Bennington Annual Town Meeting because the other things we voted on today are multi-town, school districts. So we'll be headed back to the office to collect those other town results as the night progresses. So let's see. Okay, I'll speak up. All right, for Select Board, this is an elect three. Beau Alexander, senior, three seventeen. Mike Bethel, four fifty-eight. Kelly Brundage Carroll, six eighty-two. Maria Corrales, one twenty-three. Tom Haley, eleven oh four. Jack Ripper Hurley, one thirty-eight. Martha Mackey, three sixty. Jackie Matts, eleven oh nine. Jack Rositer Munley, three fifty-six. Jim Sullivan, twelve seventy-seven. So as it stands right now, there's always potential for a keystroke error. It's looking like Haley, Matts, and Sullivan for that race. Okay, we've got a lot of other results to get through, so. Town Moderator, Jason Morrissey, seventeen eighty-six. Town Treasurer, Joan Pesano, seventeen eighty-nine. Article one, if you guys could just maybe go towards the back of the room if you're gonna be celebrating, because background noise. Article one, which is the Budget. Yes, fifteen eighteen. No, six fifty-four. Article two, which is a charter change for noncitizen voting. Yes, one thousand seventy-seven. No, fourteen nineteen. Article three, the charter change for youth voting. Yes, seven twenty-four. No, fourteen eighteen. Article four, which is the, the town leans being a priority lean. Yes, twelve thirty-seven. No, seven forty-two. Article five, which is the charter change for the tax on non-owner occupied short-term rentals. Yes, thirteen thirty-eight. No, seven forty-nine. Article six, which is the charter change on the verbiage of the Town Manager. Yes, twelve thirty-one. No, seven ninety-nine. Article seven, which gives different authorities to CPAB. Yes, fourteen seventy-seven. No, five fifty-eight. Article eight, we now move on to the agency funding. Article eight is Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse. Yes, fifteen eighty-six. No, five sixty-four. Article nine, Project Against Violent Encounters. Yes, fourteen seventy-seven. No, six fifty-six. Article ten, Green Mountain Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Yes, fifteen thirty. No, five seventy-eight. Article eleven, Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont. Yes, thirteen oh one. No, seven ninety-two. Article twelve, Council on Aging. Yes, fifteen twelve. No, five ninety-three. Article thirteen, Vermont Center for Independent Living. Yes, fourteen twelve. No, six eighty-nine. Article fourteen, the Tutorial Center. Article 14, The Tutorial Center. Yes, 1294. No, 808. Article 15, Bennington Project Independence. Yes, 1435. No, 676. Article 16, Bennington Free Clinic. Yes, 1491. No, 653. Article 17, Sunrise Family Resource Center. Yes, 1291. No, 814. Article 18, Turning Point Center of Bennington. Yes, 1206. No, 886. Article 19, Vienna and Hospice of the Southwest Region. Yes, 1567. No, 552. Article 20, Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless. Yes, 1355. No, 784. And just keep in mind, these are preliminary results. We're gonna check everything over with fresh eyes tomorrow morning, but that's all I have for you this evening. Thanks, guys.